That would be incorporated in the ordinance. Or, alternatively, we'd have four different types of questions that could specify what you were opting into. And then we would regulate it. So, there's a couple ways.
Sorry.
Marie, did you make this time?
Came to campus in class, so, yeah.
My name's Marie, by the way. I'm just a member of the planning board.
Just a member.
She actually does a lot of work.
I was just gonna say.
A lot of research behind the scenes.
Made a lot of things possible.
Yes, yes.
While I get this loaded, I'm Ryan, I'm the chair of the planning board. Basically, tonight is just to go over what the law is and what would be opting out. And I think Marie already started that. And I know this isn't much, but this is way better than what we have, so hopefully. And this is Dex. And this is also. Part of the planning board for a long time as well. There we go.
Want to opt in?
No, that side's mine. I think you guys can see over there. I know it's not great, but this is a lot better than what we've had, so.
Does anybody want a copy?
We do have some copies. We can make some more.
And just for your record, I will be taking detailed notes as I pen in all papers. So, I may ask if you do have questions and answers, I may need to know your name. I have just made a few extra.
Oh, awesome. Thank you.
Anybody else?
So. Okay. Adult Use Marijuana Act, current law. The Adult Use Marijuana Act completely replaces citizens' initiative law. This is if reference to recreational marijuana law only in adult use. The law continues to allow the personal recreational use possession and cultivation of adult use marijuana by persons over the age of 21. Although it reduces the allowable numbers of mature plants for home cultivation from six plants to three, it also establishes some guidelines. Establishes a state licensing process for four types of adult use marijuana establishments. And these four types is very important because this is really part of what, if we were to pass it, the ordinance is what would be around these four types of things. So, the first one is marijuana retail stores. The second being cultivation, cultivation facilities. Third, products manufacturing facilities. And the fourth, testing facilities. Is the mirror a little buried?
It seems a little fuzzy.
Is that bad? What's up? Did I go too far?
Well, just to make, we pulled the whole desk back.
I see. And I actually brought it up. Talk about that. Marijuana store, marijuana store is a facility authorized to sell marijuana and marijuana products directly to consumers. Marijuana stores are also authorized to sell marijuana paraphernalia and other non-consumable products like clothing, as well as consumable products that do not contain marijuana, like soda and candy. Marijuana stores may not sell tobacco or alcohol products that do not also contain marijuana. Adult use marijuana sales with the use of vending machines, drive-through windows, internet-based platforms, and deliveries are prohibited. Cultivation facilities is a facility licensed to grow, prepare, and package marijuana. Cultivation licenses are, licensees are authorized to sell the marijuana they grow and package to other establishments licensed under the Adult Use Marijuana Act. But they may not sell marijuana to registered caregivers or dispensaries distributing marijuana pursuant to the main medical marijuana laws. They also cannot sell marijuana to consumers unless they have a separate marijuana store license. A cultivation license may fall within one of four tiers of cultivation facility licenses depending on the plant canopy, square footage. Cultivation facility, there is also a subset of cultivation license called the nursery cultivation facility license. Nurseries may not cultivate more than 1,000 square feet of plant canopy. However, in addition to growing marijuana and selling it to other licensed adult use marijuana establishment, nurseries can also sell immature plants, seedlings, and seeds directly to consumers without obtaining a separate store license, a nursery cultivation license. Licensee that wishes to sell to consumers may, must section off a portion of the licensed facility dedicated to the purpose, to that purpose, and that portion must comply with all applicable rules related to the operation of marijuana stores. Products manufacturing facility. Products manufacturing facility is authorized to blindly infuse or extract components of marijuana plant to make marijuana products such as ointments. Thank you. Edibles for sale, marijuana products manufacturing facilities. Product manufacturing sometimes require extractions of marijuana concentrate using hazardous solvents such as butane or methanol, alcohol. Product manufacturing facility is going to perform this type of extraction must obtain certification from a professional engineer that is, that the proposed extraction method is safe. Testing facility. Purpose of a testing facility is conduct research, analyze, and analysis and testing marijuana, marijuana products, contamination, continuity, and safety. As the quality assurance arm of the industry, testing facility licensees are strictly prohibited from engaging in other aspects of the adult use or medical marijuana industry. Testing facilities licensees may not be registered caregivers or have any interest to medical marijuana dispensaries or any other adult use marijuana establishment. Testing facilities must be certified by Department of Health and Human Services. And Maine Center for Disease Control must be accredited and understand, develop, standards developed by the International Organization for Standardization. Basically, they don't want any conflicts of interest when it comes to testing facilities. State licensing process. Am I going on already? I'm just trying to, I want to give everybody, give you guys a lot of information, but I also want to give time for discussion. So, the Department of Administration, administrative and financial services has sole licensing and rulemaking authority for adult use marijuana businesses at the state level. If applicants meet all basic qualifications outlined in the statute and any applicable rules adopted by DABs, they will be issued a conditional license within 90 days or receipt of their application. Conditional licensees cannot engage in cultivation, manufacturing, testing, or sale marijuana. They must wait until an active license is issued. A conditional license is only good for one year and cannot be renewed. If a conditional license fails to obtain an active license within a year, the conditional license will expire. State licensing process continue. Before DABs issues an active license, the municipality in which the marijuana established will be operating must certify that the municipality has voted to authorize the operation of that type of marijuana establishment in the municipality, and that the applicant has obtained all the necessary local licenses and permits for operation if the town requires any. Within 10 days of receiving notice of local certification, DABs will not, will notify the conditional licensee that a local authorization has been confirmed. To finally receive its active license, the conditional licensee must then pay the license fee submitted to his facility by DABs. Multiple licensees, licenses. Licensees may obtain multiple licenses of any license type as long as having multiple licenses does not result in the applicant having a direct or indirect financial interest in more than three cultivation facilities or more than 30,000 square feet of plant canopy. Although licensees can extend this canopy cap through approved increase in plant canopy authorized for tier four cultivation licenses. Each license issued by DABs is separate. For example, a products manufacturing licensee cannot operate a marijuana retail store at the same location without first applying for a store license or open another products manufacturing facility at a separate location without applying for another products manufacturing license. So, licenses are very limited and very focused. The nursery cultivation facility license is the one exception to this general nursery cultivation license authorized to operate a storefront in the same location as its cultivation facility for the purpose of selling seeds, seedlings, immature plants, and other gardening supplies related to the marijuana cultivation directly to consumers. Note, municipality wishes, wishing to prevent retail sales of any type within their jurisdiction or to restrict marijuana retail sales to specific locations within the municipality may want to count the nursery cultivation facilities in their local authorization and regulations. Renewal. All licenses must be renewed by DABs annually. Licensees will receive, licensees will receive notification of the need to renew their licenses from DABs 90 days prior to its expiration. And must submit their application for renewal to DABs at least 30 days prior to expiration of the license unless they are granted an extension for good cause shown. As with the initial application before annual renewal is issued, municipalities must certify the licensee is still authorized to operate within the municipality in complying with the applicable local requirements. Under the opt-in process of Adult Use Marijuana Act, commercial testing, manufacturing, cultivation, sale of adult use marijuana is by default prohibited until municipalities vote to generally authorize the activity within their jurisdiction. Technically, there is no opt-out option. However, the law provides broad home rule authority for municipalities to regulate and restrict any type of commercial adult use marijuana activity locally if they choose to do so. So, basically, you are out until you vote in. So, there's no gray area. There's no, hey, you didn't bother to vote, so you're, you know, you're gonna have to let us do it thing. That is part of it. General authorization. No adult use marijuana establishment may obtain an active license to operate unless the municipality in which the establishment is going to be located has voted to authorize its operation. This general authorization can only be accomplished by vote of the legislative body, be it a town meeting vote or town or city council vote. General authorization can take various forms depending on the extent to which the municipality wants to regulate such establishments locally. If the municipality wants to take a hands-off approach to regulation and let the operation of adult use marijuana be governed by the state licensing process and market, its legislative body can approve a simple ordinance or warrant, or it's called authorizing the operation of some or all types of adult use marijuana establishments. Basically, there's 72, 74 pages of law that they have around that, so it's pretty extensive. But the town can do additional steps if we were to opt in. Or, you could just simply go with what the state has, if we were to opt in. Types of local regulation. Municipalities may also enact additional local requirements by ordinance if they want to take a more active role in regulating the location, number, operations of adult use marijuana establishments. By ordinance, municipalities must have the ability to, one, limit the number of some or all types of establishments, place restrictions on the location of some or all types of establishments. Three, impose performance standards. Or, four, require licenses and payments of reasonable licensing fees. It's always quite wrong. Reasonable is, it was, yeah. Anyway, so we can talk more about that. Municipalities may choose to amend existing land use or zoning ordinance to include certain requirements for adult use marijuana establishments. Municipalities may also choose to enact a standalone ordinance governing the operation of adult use marijuana establishments within the municipality. Zoning. Through zoning ordinance, municipalities have the ability to divide the municipality into districts and apply different regulations for each district. We currently do that anyways for certain businesses, just on a general area. We do have three zonings. We have commercial, residential, uh, commercial, residential, and rural. So, there is already some three, three zones within the town. Does anybody know what the zones mean, or do you want me to quickly go over that?
Would you please?
Yeah, okay, so.
And explain by location?
Yeah, I can give you locations. So, commercial zoning, basically, any type of industry is allowed for the most part. There's still the performance standards that they have to do. Commercial zoning currently is from the Carmel line on Route 69, all the way up Route 69 to the Four Corners. And then that ends on 69 there, and then it's Route 9 from the Hand and Town line to where the fire department is. That is your commercial zone. So, Route 9, not all of it. Most of Route 9 and 69 from Route 9, basically, to the interstate. And then residential is basically our throughways. It's the rest of Route 9 to Dixmont. Kennebec Road and North Road, those are our residential areas. And then our rurals are basically all the crossroads. So, basically, all that, what we try to do there is, you think about more like the town roads for the most part, even though we do actually do some of like the Kennebec. So, that's why we have divided up. And basically, depending on that zone has certain restrictions within just generic when it comes to businesses and stuff like that. So, this is local regulatory authority zone. Through zoning ordinance, municipalities have the ability to divide municipalities into districts and apply different regulations for each district. Municipality with zoning may wish to limit adult use marijuana establishments to one or a few districts in the municipality, whereas such activities is more consistent with surrounding activities. For example, municipalities may want to restrict cultivation facilities to agricultural districts, retail stores to commercial districts, or testing facilities to industrial districts. Commercial, industrial is the same for us. Main law also establishes special notice and hearing requirements for adoption of amendment or amendment of the zoning ordinance. Other land use ordinances, municipalities are not required to enact zoning ordinances to regulate marijuana establishments. Municipalities have broad home rule authority to enact or amend municipal-wide land use ordinances, provide standards to marijuana establishments wherever located in the municipality. Examples of non-zoning land use regulation for adult use marijuana establishments could include, but not limited to, odor control, pesticide control, performance standards, site plan review, home occupation permits, building permits for new structures, signage restrictions, or parking setback requirements. Licensing. Municipalities have the authority to impose licensing requirements and associated fees on the various types of adult use marijuana establishment. Municipalities can require adult use marijuana businesses or owners, owners to be licensed either through a general business licensing ordinance or through marijuana-specific licensing requirements. Any fees established pursuant to this authority must reasonably reflect the municipality's costs associated with the license process, procedure, and enforcement. And it's basically where they come in the reasonable amount. So, I mean, we can't say, you know, our overhead's $100, our licensing fees $20,000. You know, that's just not, you know, you have to be somewhere within reason here.
And that would be above the state?
Correct. Yeah, it's basically another level of fees. Taxation. The Act authorizes a 20% effective tax through the collection of sales tax on the retail sales of marijuana and marijuana products, and an excise tax on wholesale products sold by cultivation facilities. Excise tax, excise taxes are paid monthly by your cultivation licensees on all marijuana sold by the facility to other adult use licenses, licensees. Excise taxes are $335 per pound of marijuana flower or mature marijuana plants, $94 per pound of marijuana trimmed, $1.50 per immature plant, 30 cents per marijuana seed. Excise tax also applies to sales by nursery cultivation facilities or other licensees, as well as sale in effect of marijuana cultivation facilities authorized in the two-year sunset provision. Sales tax, the Act imposes a 10% sales tax rate on the value of all marijuana and marijuana products sold by the establishment licensed for retail sale, including retail sale by nursery cultivation facilities. 12% of the excise tax revenue, 12% of the sales tax revenue collects or transferred to the adult use public, marijuana public health and safety fund to facilitate public health and safety awareness education program and training for local county and state law enforcement. The reminder of the sex, the remainder of the excise and sales tax revenues are deposited into the general fund. Otherwise, there is no revenue sharing with those municipalities that have opened their jurisdiction to adult use marijuana establishment. Local option taxation of adult use marijuana establishment is not authorized. No personal property taxes and real property taxes still apply to all adult use marijuana establishment. So, otherwise, if you build a store, for example, you're gonna get taxed as a store. So, that would increase the problem. Local revenue on adult use marijuana. Municipalities have no authority to tax any adult use marijuana establishments other than levying traditional property taxes. There is also no state tax revenue sharing in municipalities under the new law. Main law does not permit impact fees to be used to raise general revenues. Impact fees are restricted to recovering the cost of public infrastructure improvements such as new roads and sewers made necessary by new generally large-scale developments such as a residential subdivision or commercial industrial projects. This makes Maine the only legal, only legalizing stage which is not allowing for any new local revenues aside from ordinary municipality licensing fees that are strictly limited to existing statutes. It is expected that this bill, oh, sorry, LD 3335, an act to require the state to distribute 25% of adult use marijuana retail sales and excise tax revenue to generating municipalities. It is expected that this bill, which has been amended but seeks to share of tax proceeds will be revisited in the second regular session of the legislature that begins in January. The amended bill, if passed, would provide roughly 10% back to communities which opt in. This is not, you know, obviously, it's a bill coming up. There's no guarantees if we were to opt in. Local costs for adult use marijuana establishments. Reports from other states that have legalized marijuana for adult use purposes and from Maine's experiment, experience with medical marijuana operations indicate anticipated costs will be, will include legal fees associated with potential deterioration, increased risk of fires and power outages as a result of faulty electrical wiring or abstraction operations, mold resulting from the moisture created when plants are grown indoors causing humidity and resale issues, fertilizer runoff, increased electrical and water usage, so mostly for us it's electrical usage because we don't have city water, nuisance level odor and lighting, parking and transportation safety at high-traffic operations, and general crime issues such as OUI and theft or burglary related to large, in large part is this being a casual in the industry. So, recreational marijuana is, while approved at the state level, is still federally illegal and therefore, they cannot do business with banks for the most part because banks are federally insured and therefore, they can put their licenses everywhere. So, that's why it's like a catch, like what you were saying about catch.
There is a bank in Fort Worth that.
There is a new one that is, there's some that are not federally insured, but you do have limitations. You're, you know, you can't go into TD Bank, but you could, there's some other banks that are coming out now. And there is some of the states that have that. There's actually a new industry and they're actually doing quite well on that. So, I'm sure this will follow suit, just like in the United States.
I'll bet they'll get 10% to be.
Yeah, yep. All right, questions for Newberg. Does the town want to opt in in any or all of the following adult use establishments cultivation, including nurseries? Boutique max 30 mature plants or 50 square feet of canopy. Nurseries, max 1,000 square feet of plant canopy or growth space. Growth facilities with max 2,000 square feet of plant canopy, 7,000 square feet of plant canopy, and max 20,000 feet of plant canopy. What that is, is the different licenses, right? Is that correct, Marie? There's, at the state, there's different levels of licenses that you would pay for that to be able to grow so much. Retail stores, products manufacturing facilities, testing facilities, and none of the above, I guess, also would be an option. Does the town want to limit the number of any or all types of adult use establishments? Does the town want to limit the districts of any or all types of adult use establishments, commercial, residential, rural? If the town opts into adult use establishment, does the town want to allow medical marijuana as well? Actually, I think we don't have an option on marijuana. I, this, anyways, we can discuss that separately. Medical marijuana is separate and licensed through the state. I've had conflicting answers on that. Recent updates. August 21st, 2019 cheat sheet for Maine marijuana laws. MMA's Legal Services has once again updated its marijuana statutes cheat sheet to reflect the most recent amendments to the state's marijuana and hemp laws. You can find a copy at this website. Actually, Marie put in hyperlinks here, which basically means you can click to there. So, if anybody wants a copy of this, I'd be more than happy to email it to you.
We can put this on the town website?
Oh, yeah, actually, you could do that, couldn't you? There we go. So, you can just download it and the hyperlinks will download with it.
Okay.
Tuesday. Yeah, thank you. There's a lot of additional references. Marie put this together. This is very helpful. Opt in municipalities. So far, is it 10? 10 is opt in?
I think it's up to 14 now.
Oh, wow, so four more have opted in from the past month or so?
Edna, opted in.
Okay, so that's one. Bangor, who is the most closest one that had opted in, but they'd opted in a while ago.
So, a question about those, the different licensing, you know, if we want to do cultivation, retail. So, and at what level?
Yeah.
If you opt, you have to make those choices now when you opt in?
No. So, the question we had our lawyer write, that's gonna be on the town ballot, and I'll bring it up. But in short, it basically states that, does the, is the town in favor of opting in? And if so, direct the planning board to create an ordinance. And until that ordinance is created, there'll be no business in short, basically. It's a built-in, what am I?
Safety net.
Yeah, safety net.
It was a built-in safety net that we.
Yeah, it basically, nothing can be done until we actually write.
So, you can start the process.
Right, and we combine the two because basically, if we opt in, all right, yes, we say yes, but everything's on hold until we write the actual ordinance. Nobody can do anything until we write the ordinance. If we say no, no sense going forward.
And so, if you decided that, you know, this canopy space would be a medium range or a small range in the ordinance? Ordnances, you have the ability to rewrite them at a certain time if it's decided, yeah, we can grow this larger, or if it was large.
You're gonna make amendments. So, if you wanted to start small?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying, basically, like, you know, hey?
Let's start this.
All these things we were worried about really didn't seem to come to fruition? Yes, we can make an amendment. And then again, the town would have to vote on it because it is amendment, and so it'd be still through the town process.
Ryan, in our, in our current ordinance, we limited quite a few things. It's sort of new point at this point, but we did work, these guys did all put together a brief ordinance. But we, we limited retail sales.
It was just retail.
Just retail?
Yeah. And even that, basically, what the planning board has decided is that we feel that if the town wants to opt in, and we are going to go through this process of actually writing an ordinance, we should start at a blank slate and let the town tell us, you know, have, provide, give the town the option to feedback. Because maybe we say, you know what, we do have a commercial district. We have a busy area. We may allow one store, because we can do that. You can have a limit of just one store. You can re-limit the number of stores. Or you can say, no stores. You know, we'll go by what the public opinion is on that. You can do that on the, on the canopy. You can say, you know what, we're only gonna allow first lot of canopy sizes for this, and we may not allow nurseries in certain areas. That's where the ordinance is gonna be the most is because you're gonna take the state laws and then you're gonna say, how do I want to apply this to the town? So, then you can say, okay, the town has said yes. Now, what is the town, what does that mean to the town? Are we looking at more of just an agricultural-based part of that process? And we limit nurseries and stores, and we just say, okay, we're only gonna allow the growth for that part of it? So, be it. It's whatever, you know, it's, it does give the flexibility to do feedback on that.
Do you mind bringing up that preliminary?
The question?
The question that we've run a vote on just so we.
Yeah, I could have found it, but I think. Yeah, I could have found it, but I think I have it.
Yes, we know, I, we, we worked on it at the last, one of the last meetings and I don't have it with me.
Yeah.
But we should, too bad we.
Because that's the only thing we're really going to talk about tonight, right?
Well, we're going to talk, well, we, what we're looking for feedback from the town is, you know, is the town interested? I mean, is this like, we're going to still put it on the ballot, it's going on the November ballot. Um, is what our plan is. So we expect to get, the town of Newburgh actually has a pretty good record for people showing up to vote. So I think that will give us the best, you know, yes, no from the town, feedback from the town. Um, and then, but from there, really, we're taking cues of, okay, well, this is what we're thinking. Well, now we need to start possibly lining up this ordinance so we're not dragging it out for long-term leases type thing. But this is more like an informational meeting and also to give the town an option to ask, you know, ask questions, provide feedback, you know, and you give us some feedback where we are on this, so.
Because based on what people say, we could really, the, the planning board can limit, write a, you know, draft up a restrictive ordinance or a broad ordinance, you know. Or, you know, we can limit stuff in certain zones, all that stuff. That's what they're, that's what their job is though. I mean, you could have, you know, if you, if you, if you don't decide where you want it off, you can have a 5,000 square foot.
I have a question.
Yes.
On this one, the smaller pamphlet, it says that, um, uh, if passed, uh, this will effectively provide roughly 10% of the tax revenue back to the communities which opt in. Says that on here.
If that bill was passed in January.
In January. Okay, because then on here, it says there's no revenue sharing with those municipalities that have opened their jurisdictions to adult use marijuana establishments. So I was just curious, like, if, if it is passed here, how much of that money is going to be given to the local community to help things that need to be done?
If we pass this, that then there's no guarantee that we'll get any money back from the, the state. We have to wait until the state, uh, in January, if they even vote on it in January. You know, every, every indication is, is that they're going to do something because of the extra costs on the municipalities and every other state is doing that.
Right.
There's no guarantee on that. I mean, you, they could make a 180 and change their mind between now and then, you never know.
They just, the state just came up with these, correct me if I'm wrong, you guys. The state just came up with these guidelines. They voted July 18th or something like that. That's why we had a meeting and said, we better get a public hearing together so we can put a question out in the fall for, on the ballot. You know, but if you depend on the state to give you a clear answer in a timely fashion, you are usually greatly disappointed.
All right, this will be the article. And I can, I'll email this and we'll put it on the website as well, possibly. You have it as well? Perfect, yes, she does. Shall the town of Newburgh, and this is long-winded, I did not write it, the lawyers wrote it. Shall the town of Newburgh vote to authorize within the municipality the operation of adult use marijuana stores, product manufacturing facilities, testing facilities and cultivationation facilities, provided that such activities operate in compliance with all applicable state and local requirements and shall not lawfully be established until such time as an ordinance regulating such activities entitled the Adult Use Marijuana Ordinances is enacted? Yes, sir?
Is it too late to ask the lawyer to break it down into four questions? Someone may be in favor of agricultural approval and not necessarily retail. That sounds like we're going to have to do a blanket yes or no and have to close out an awful lot of people.
So we went back and forth a little bit.
Isn't this, this, this is where our local ordinance has to come in, am I right?
Yeah.
I mean, because we either opt in or we opt out. There's no middle of the road.
But as I understand it, you can opt in of any one of the four. You're not required to do the broad yes or no. You could opt in for agricultural use and not retail.
So like originally, we had it written that included three of the four?
Right.
Was limiting the four, not the retail part of it, sorry, the fourth one being retail. Um, and basically, you know, that was our initial goal. And through discussion, through the planning, I'll admit it was the planning board. We discussed and the feedback we got from some other members is shouldn't we leave it all options on the table? And considering that this bits of my, my, on the, on it, then we can then select which ones we want to include. But I do see your point of view because.
If people vote no because they're opposed to one of the four, they're going to kill the whole thing.
Yep.
They should be able to say yes to this, no to that, yes to this, no to that. I really believe you should break it up into the four separate categories.
Yep.
Would it be possible then, if not to break it down into the four categories? Because I agree with you, but then if you can't do that, could you put a disclaimer that, you know, this is just whether we opt in in general or not, this is not the full.
It's got to be clear.
That's why it says about the ordinance. I don't know, maybe I can ask the town lawyer to write four individual questions with that section. Basically, where it says, basically, we have to write an ordinance, everything's on hold until an ordinance is written. You are you in favor agriculture until an ordinance is written? Are you favored until retail?
Right.
And you may get a better.
That would simplify your ordinance process after the fact.
It would.
Thing. If we vote in favor of two and we say no way to two, now that you only have to worry about two.
We only have to worry about the two.
Yeah.
And that would be your job, use your.
I doubt it.
MMA does have some sample warrant articles that gives you, um, referendum questions for specific, uh, types of establishments and limitations on different types of establishments, so.
I think maybe we, we should work with the town lawyer and break it into four.
Yeah.
And do, and basically chop off the back half of the ordinance part and add it to every single one of them. And basically, are you in favor of number one? And then have the whole language about the ordinance being, being written. And then basically like where you're getting at, because you're like, you were saying, yeah, I'm fine with agriculture, but.
And, uh, my interest in it is because this is an agricultural community. When I was researching the question, the most interesting one I discovered was Pueblo County, Colorado. They have, of course, legalized adult use marijuana.
Yep.
Pueblo County is similar to Penopit County in that it has a poor service city. The city of Pueblo is like Bangor.
Yep.
But the remainder of the community is primarily an agricultural rural county. And, uh, according to a Colorado State University study, I, I was amazed that, uh, first of all, they found that once local farms started converting to the agricultural growth of cannabis, property values increased 6% in the county. They said that, uh, the Colorado State University study said that taxed and regulated cannabis growing industry, this has nothing to do with the retail sales. So they weren't looking at the places in Denver that were selling. This is restricted in the agricultural standpoint, contributed more than $58 million to the Pueblo County economy. Primarily, they were collecting from excise taxes on equipment and things which would apply locally. And, uh, it's interesting, they generated $58 million. Their costs were $23 million for enforcement and inspection, giving them a net positive gain of $35 million in mechanic offers. So I, I see that and I saw that the Nevada, which is about to go into effect, the agricultural commissioner in Nevada predicted that by 2024, the state will generate 41,000 new farm jobs, producing $1.7 billion in, uh, labor. Uh, so I got curious and I called the Maine Revenue Service. The only thing we know is the experience to date with the medicinal marijuana. And I was told by someone at the Maine Revenue Service that according to their figures, there are 15 licensed Maine medicinal marijuana growers in the state of Maine. In 2012, each of the 15 averaged $750,000 each in sales to legal medical marijuana dispensaries. So when I look at a community like this and being a libertarian, I don't want to tell anybody what to do with their own property. I don't want to stand in the way of someone at my table to save a family farm from the potential economic gains. Whether you personally, you know, like the use of it or not is not the issue, which is why I think it should be broken up into the four questions. But when I saw the economics of the agricultural aspect, uh, it just stunned me that there is potential. And if other nearby towns are opting in, a farmer's loss here, if we don't go for it, is going to be a farmer's gain across the town line.
I'd like to make a comment on that. I, there's definitely the, um, potential gain for the farming, assets of farming community on an individual basis. But I'm not sure about the excise tax. I don't think that goes back to, at the local level. I don't think any of the taxes imposed, the state tax or the excise tax goes back to the local.
It'll go back to the state level.
Goes back to the state level.
You do get taxes, for instance, on personal property. You get the excise tax on equipment. So one would assume that someone who's going to have a nursery. There, there will be equipment and things that will come to the town as well. Plus, I think it'll lobby very hard for LD 335, get the legislature up their duff this year.
And that, that farm is going to need to keep some younger workers, which we have a, a significant age gap in this state, truly. Folks leave, get established, come back, and not everybody can do that. So it starts backfilling certain other needs.
I'm just saying that at, at the municipal level, like our town budget, I mean, if you come into the budget meeting in January, I mean, we were voting on $200 for the library. We have a very small, tight budget. And so right now, none of that, none of the revenue goes to Newburgh. It goes to, at the state level, unless they pass that LD, whatever it is, in January.
But when the licensures all go to the town?
The license fees, it's sort of like when you, um, when you have an application for a land use, um, application for a site review, there's an application fee that basically just covers our time in processing the paperwork.
And we could impose an additional fee, but then again, it has to be within those limits of.
There's very strict state guidelines as far as what, um, a local level can charge for the licensing of a business. It's, we don't, can't just say it's going to be, you know, $500 or $1,000. It's state, that's also state regulated. And I don't know how much it is, but I know that they, it's a very small, tight window. It's not like we, we, it's not the town we're, right now, we'd not be making.
A lot. We, to his point, we, we'd see potential increase in property taxes with the, with any new facility, whether any of the four, um, and excise tax really on any additional equipment, I mean, and our potential vehicles and stuff like that, so.
And a little is more than we got now.
It is, now, it is.
And hopefully, if they do pass that, we can see that money coming back to the libraries and schools and local community.
I agree.
And the other thing is, the more money that people in the town make, even if you're not in the cannabis industry in this town, if you're in some other industry and the rest of your community is making more money, you're, the economy is up, your business will make more money.
Yeah, I, there is the, I almost said triple down. There, there is the residual inflow of additional funds into other businesses because of that. Yes, there always is, so I mean, we'll see that.
Um, I have a, you know, I, I, um, I'm glad of your comments and, um, it's, it's, felt like it was one-sided, but, you know, again, I, I am glad of that information. Um, I guess one of my concerns is that we would vote before the legislature does decide. You know, it, it almost feels like people put in the car, people are the horse. Um, but, I mean, because if we do vote and opt in.
Yeah.
For some people in this town, it might be, um, a matter of saying yes if they know there's 10% involved.
Yeah.
I, I kind of thought it was funny, the, uh, who the state is having, um, license. It was like, okay, do these people have any knowledge or any, uh, what is it? Financial, administrative and financial?
Yeah.
So that kind of, that was different for me. I don't even know what, well, anyway. Um, I guess I'd kind of like to know about oversight. Um, I mean.
And oversight as an.
Everybody here probably knows that there's many marijuana growers in the town of Newburgh. Has been for years and years and years. Um, and I guess one of my concerns is that a lot of people aren't going to license, but they're still going to be selling. And, you know, I mean, like one of the things that talked about, you can't, um, try to make your product so, uh, it would be, um, children would want to use it, you know, so.
Yeah.
You know, I live in, it, it, what you were saying is still correct, that where I live, it's considered, um, commercial. It isn't anymore. Okay, all right. Because I was just thinking, I mean, my whole hill, it just.
Your residential.
You know, so, um, I just think too that we have to really think. The state has promised a lot of things. Uh, we're going to get money for this, we're going to get money for that. And that doesn't come through. And then oftentimes, I mean, I'll tell you about the triple down effect, is that the federal government doesn't pay for anything anymore and they say the state should. And the state says, we don't have any money, so let's go to the people. That's what I've seen happening a lot. You know, I, I'm not against, um, I'm not against certain kinds of marijuana, uh, use. Um, my husband and I both use a medicinal. And I'll tell you, it's helping us with arthritis and, it's tremendously. So I think there's a place in our society for. I am concerned with the, um, people out there driving and whether there's a test.
There is.
They, they do have that now?
Yep, you're impaired driving. You can be charged just as if you're alcohol. If they find that you're impaired.
And, you know, and I'm also, you know, I think the crime rate might go up, you know.
Well, it is a cash job, a business, and that is a big concern of me and for me that.
Why would the crime rate go?
Well, it's because it's opportunity.
The funds, but the funds are required to have security and cameras.
It's more private.
If anything, a more, a more restricted industry where there are regulations.
If anybody wants to see what one looks like, you drive up 69, go over the Hampden Town Line where the old airport is.
Right.
There's a facility currently there.
Where, say that again?
Uh, if you go, go up 69 and you go over that into the Hampden, there used to be a private airport to your left, on your left. There's a new greenhouse and a nice big fence all around it with cameras. They turned the hangar into a grow area. And now they've actually, uh, built another greenhouse as well because of the business. Doing it very well by the looks of it. So, but yeah, I mean, there is, to his point, there is security requirements in the state law, so.
So Hampden is an opt-in place?
I believe that's a, it must be a medical marijuana facility, yeah, so.
Oh, which is a separate thing.
That is separate.
Okay, yeah.
And I totally understand what you're saying about how it's like the carriage before the horse, where we have to vote for this before we know that it can actually benefit the town. That's a, that's a fact and that's something that we all.
Well, we could wait, we could wait to.
But at the same time.
You can both play.
Right, and.
You can always come on again.
Well, I think, um, I look at it this way is that, and to your point, I'm never going to count on anything from the state.
Right.
So it's, it's just my personal view. So from that and then to your point, how much do we let, it, it's their land and it's an agricultural business. Let them do it if they want to do it. I mean, it's those type of things.
It's a personal choice. You could be lactose intolerant and be a great dairy farmer.
Exactly, yeah, exactly. So I, that's, it, it's kind of where I am. I will never, in one of, from my point of view, and I would never say, like, you're, to your point, we're going to get 10% from the state, because I would not even mention it. Because that would be the icing on the cake for if it, if it was to pass, if you want to call it that.
But when people see that, you know, it starts saying, oh, pachy, pachy.
Well, and I wouldn't, I mean, the rules pretty much, I mean, how we would write it and it's, and you're. Well, and I wouldn't. I mean, the rules pretty much, I mean, how we'd write it, and it's, and the, you're, that is, you know, the extra bonus. It's more or less, do we allow it in the town, and why, to your other point of, should we wait? Well, the licenses are gonna be coming out here pretty soon. And if we do vote in, that gives the people within the town an opportunity to at least get on the lips, as far as I'm, I, my understanding, is that they may get the temporary license until we finally get an ordinance approved. And our, our goal is to have an ordinance done by spring at the latest. Um, hopefully sooner than that. I mean, it could take longer depending on the feedback of the town. To your point, if we break it up into four, we might only get one yes. Well, that makes things a little bit easier, but.
I was gonna say, I pulled up the MMA, the latest report from, um, August ninth. The towns that have opted in, um, for instance, Camden opted in for growing only and none of the others. Um, Mercer, wherever that is, opted in just for manufacturing. Um, also, uh, opted in for, uh, everything except retail. So the towns that have, um, that I'm looking at, it looks like there's eighteen of them, although Portland is pending.
Bangor, I know. I don't know what they've opted in, but I know they're opted in for something.
Four, all four.
All four. Yeah, and that's where I assume probably was their primary. And honestly, I, if we opt in, I see Newburgh as being, you'll see it in Newburgh because of our location to Bangor. Because the stores are there, and.
So I'm sure this is a tough question. If, if we opted in for just the grow part, then a farmer would grow, but then have to sell to another store that is not here, like to the Bangor.
Right.
Okay, okay, I get it.
Um, I did wanna, um, I don't think we talked about the oversight part. Um, is that an Oscar?
It's the state because of all the licenses, yeah. Are you, what do you, are you mean oversight as in, like, the policing and?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, it's a tax, you're basically putting an additional tax on the, the local police department, so. But Department of Agriculture also does a lot of the oversights, the oversights of the laws. And then also, I believe depending on what I read, you know, there was some foresters, but then there was also it has to be approved drawings. You have to provide an approved plan, it has to be site visits, and they do that every year. So I mean, it's quite a bit of oversight.
And they're laughing.
If anyone do an oversight on those who just do it in their home or in the.
No, because you can't. Right, I mean, you can grow three, you can have three, three, is it, three personal plant, full mature plants, and twelve, thank you, immature twelve, and three personal users.
I think what she's asking now is that, on the local level, and correct me if I'm wrong, is there gonna be somebody that if you happen to drive by this whole field and you're like, hmm, I don't remember them having a license, and you look and they don't, what, what do you do then?
You'd probably have to report it to the local or the police and or the.
But it's gonna be a hit or miss, just like anything.
And to your point though, maybe you two might correct, I believe the USDA has deregulated hemp.
Yes.
And hemp is now an agricultural crop.
Exactly.
It is not covered by this, so somebody could plant a field of hemp on. So while it may smell very close to it, may look exactly the same. Hemp is different, is a fiber, that you can go do tomorrow, because that can, it's an agricultural crop.
Yep.
Um, and then, so there is that possibility. Obviously, people are gonna put signs up. And there's a lot of different regulations, cause on the hemp, you don't have to have a fence to, um, and all that stuff, so that, as well. So there should be an interesting.
It could affect the marijuana growth, but.
It could, but cross pollinization, yeah. Well, that's, that's where the hemp, the hemp is actually also very regulated as well. Uh, you have to, they come and test it every year when your crop is, and if your. Thank you, is too high, they basically, you have to get rid of it.
Oh, so hemp has huge.
Yeah, but it's at a very low level that it has, if it hits a certain, certain threshold.
It's an alternative to cotton fiber.
Yeah.
So people, as it is now, people just in their own home and grow marijuana and utilize it?
For their personal use, right. Yeah, and I could go plant fifty acres of hemp. So.
With no oversight?
With no, well, there's still oversight at the state level, there is licensing. You do need, there is, just like this law, there is some pretty intense licensing for hemp. And there's testing requirements and all of that as well.
And they do show up, they do check your books, they do check your facilities.
Yes, they do, yeah.
Not always announced, so there are visitors, maybe not in the town of Newburgh, but there are visitors.
Yeah.
Newburgh don't have any ordinances on it.
We can't, it's an agricultural crop. It's an agro.
It's like corn.
Basically, you have to cut it like corn too from there. It's a pretty beef, I don't know. I talked to somebody and they had to go out and use a chainsaw the first time they did it, so.
Do you know, under the new state law, the home grower that's home comes under the boutique cultivation facility regulation?
No, home grown is separate. It is three mature, twelve immature.
Boutique is strictly commercial.
Yeah, boutique would be like a store, so.
I'm just curious, and I don't know if this applies, but are there any, are businesses already established in Newburgh that because we haven't voted to opt in, that they're just kind of in this weird gray area floating along until the.
We have a couple of people that have expressed interest.
I don't know of any that's active to you though.
There's no active because we have not did. There is a medical marijuana facility in the town. They're licensed to the state, we can't touch that, so.
And then home businesses are just that, they're home businesses. What we're talking about is the next step. Or how, I mean, how do you?
So to sell marijuana that's not medical,
Yep.
it's a recreational use, we have to opt in. Everything else is illegal in town.
You can't have like a farm stand.
You can't have a farm stand, you can't have a home business.
Well, I'm thinking more of like, say, say I'm gonna, um, have a huge garden, and I'm gonna make my jams and jellies, and I'm just gonna sell them out in my kitchen. Can't, can I do that without anybody's consent?
Well, you still need to have, yeah, you still need, there's, that's the, the regular ordinance, yes, that would be a home business.
Okay.
So that would still fall under the land use ordinance, yes.
Okay.
So, okay, I second you.
Yeah, and I just have a couple quick questions. So I always thought that marijuana is also considered an agricultural crop.
No, it's not.
Okay, so what type is it?
So marijuana is still illegal at the federal level.
Right.
Hemp?
But.
Hemp, which is a type of plant of, it's a similar pool, but it has a lower tier. That has been deregulated.
It's just a political term.
Yeah, splitting hairs, because.
The same plant, the same plant.
Well, what I was getting at, and just food for thought moving forward with the town ordinance is everything. In the residential areas, you can have agricultural.
Yeah, you can have agricultural, I, that, I saw that too. Agriculture's allowed in all three districts.
Right, so I was wondering, how does that, I mean, if I become licensed, this is a hypothetical. If I become licensed and I'm in a residential area, there's nothing really to stop me. Unless something specific in the ordinance says no.
In the marijuana ordinance itself.
And you, so you could restrict, restrict my size, you could do all sorts of restrictions in the ordinance later.
In the ordinance, for the locals' own.
In the new land use ordinance, so the new land use ordinance, you can build a greenhouse in any three districts to grow tomatoes. You know, any agricultural crop. We have specifically written in the land use ordinance that greenhouses, when talking about an agriculture crop, does not include recreational marijuana.
Okay.
So that would have to be addressed in an ordinance if one was to be dumped to rent. So that would be some of those things we'd have to address.
Okay, I just wanna tag onto that. I'm a code nerd, if you guys didn't know. And, um, in the building code, life safety one oh one, there, uh, the new code that's going to be adopted by the state of Maine in two thousand and nineteen, there is an entire section in there on marijuana facilities. So that's gonna greatly help on the local level as far as what you can and can't do. If you grow it, you cannot extract it at the same location, under the same business name. So now you're talking, if you own fifty acres, you're gonna have to split part of it off if you wanna extract a room.
And that's what they're also talking about, the licenses, you would need two licenses.
Right, but it's even in the buildings too.
Okay.
So just start thinking about that, if that's something that you're interested in, there's all sorts of restrictions in the building code too.
Yeah.
You can sell it in the same location, but it has to be separated by a firewall, needs two different corporation names, needs all this other stuff. So it's not as easy as, you're gonna grow it in the backyard and sell it on the front porch. It doesn't work that way.
It's kinda the same thing with craft, with craft beer and cider.
Exactly.
You can produce it in one, like, you have to have separate.
Right.
Separation between different types of business that you're operating.
You're talking legal separations or actual space?
Physical separation.
Physical, variable separation.
Can't be in the same building, or it just can't be in the same room?
Cannot be in the same building.
So you, you'd have to have two separate buildings.
Right, and that means something altogether different as far as building codes and fire codes go.
Sure.
You, it can be under quote, one roof, but you have to have a firewall between, and they're extremely expensive to build. So, um, and I just wanna tag onto the, our farmer friend over there in the corner, um, that I didn't notice. I just learned, I just learned this, that most, and, and any of the growers in here can correct me if I'm wrong, cause I just learned this, but most opt to grow in a greenhouse because there's so many different types of plants. And if I were to grow one type of plant, and if you're within a couple miles of me, and you opt to grow the other plant, your plants will kill mine. So you don't wanna grow it out in the open in a field typically. That's why most of them opt to grow it in greenhouse, because it restricts the pollen, it restricts the insects, it restricts all sorts of stuff. But I thought that was interesting. So I don't think you're gonna see.
Extend your growth.
Right, you're not gonna see a, um, fifty thousand square foot canopy of marijuana just growing out in a field somewhere. I highly doubt that would happen anywhere, let alone Mexico. It's not gonna happen in Newburgh. So if that's what one of your fears is, I can, you can just put that asleep, cause that's not the way it goes.
You'll see the hemp field, if you see it, it's most likely.
It's hemp, and they don't need fences, they don't, there's all sorts of different rules there. You'll see signs that say no THC and all this other stuff.
Yeah.
I have a question, maybe somebody knows I don't. Um, there's different ways of growing. There's hydroponics, and then there's, right, there's dirt. And you could do both, um, in a greenhouse. So with hydroponics, I'm assuming that there's different kinds of chemicals, and there'd be maybe, uh, environmental, you know, impact, and how would that be managed? So the large.
Well, disposal of your gray water, I mean, yeah.
They should monitor that.
Yeah, well, when you, you get into your chemicals and your fertilizers, you have to actually get a sprayer's license, which is monitored. So you need to get certified for that, you have to, you can only use certain chemicals, you need clean rooms. There's certain air exchanges, and the building code, again, helps you there. You need all sorts of tests and regulations and logbooks, cause they will come and check, and it's, it's not as simple as just, like I said, just throwing it up and throwing it.
And that's, and the state law is pretty beefy on that stuff. And they.
State covers all of those.
Covers all that. It's, from our point of view is, do we want all four, do we want one of the four, somewhere in between, do we want nine? And if we vote in one of any, are we gonna limit by zone, are we gonna limit by size, are we gonna limit, you know, by number?
Winthrop, I think, has, is, is gonna have retail, but they're only gonna allow two in the town.
Well, see, that's, I don't understand that. How, how would you do that?
So the town, so you have to license every year, so the state's gonna call and ask, I want your license, and the town's gonna say, these are the two.
Needs a lot of other people who could potentially monitor how.
Absolutely. I think that if our town voted to opt in, that it should opt in in the broadest sense until it gets a handle of what it needs. And then it can revisit the issue and say, well, okay, so now we're gonna limit it to this.
So, so I think, back to your point, I think if we had the four individual questions, they would still be broad. So if we broke it up into the four, say, do you want retail store? Do you want cultivation, do you want production, do you want?
Yeah.
Products, I'm sorry, products, do you want testing? So if, but within those, each one's are individual, will still be pretty broad until a ordinance is written.
Sure.
And then what about the districts that they're grown in?
Well, and that would be part, right, that, that wouldn't be, districts wouldn't be discussed until an ordinance was written. So, well, for like retail stores for the most part anyway, it's gonna be pretty limited to certain districts, just based on the land use ordinance as it is. So, but you could restrict it even further. I want it within commercial district, but I only want it within a mile of the interstate. Or I just throw some things out, so, you know, you don't, you only wanna live in the interstate and stuff like that. But, um, so, so I, I like what you were suggested, and I think it still does what you want to do, is that it leaves each one broad, so that we can, we'll revisit it
Yeah.
and then discuss, but we can also, to his point, if the town says one or yes, yes on only one or two, we only have one or two topics to discuss.
Yeah.
And we can really focus on that area. So I kinda like that idea. I think it's, from the other towns doing that, I don't think it would be impossible to do by any means.
Right.
So, I mean, we just have to make sure the warrant's written.
Right, I was just gonna say, you, you said you had a sample of the, of the.
Of a law?
It's on the, um, MMA website.
It's on the MMA website.
It's on probably one of the hyperlinks.
Yeah, it is one of the hyperlinks.
We'll be able to get to it.
Okay.
Um, some of the hyperlinks are, that's all data.
Yeah, I seem I have to, you can.
No, actually, this one, um, anybody that's heard of this one, sample warrant.
Oh, okay, yeah. So some of the, the MMA publishes a lot of stuff for like the planning board and selectmen. Um, so we can go to it and actually pull up stuff. Some of the stuff can probably have to be numbered, but I'm assuming probably most of this stuff is generic. You don't need to actually be a member of the law, and.
Right, um.
You had a question?
I was just gonna add that I think that if the town opts in, even if it's just in an agricultural manner, I don't think that limiting the number of licenses that are issued would be smart. Cause I think that it would leave other people out of it, who may be sitting on farms, that have a ton of potential, where they just aren't, you know, don't have the opportunity.
Yeah, and, and to the libertarian point of view, I, I, yeah. I, I kinda agree with the vote, you know, if this is what the town says yes, then everybody should have an equal opportunity.
Yeah.
And it, whatever the playing field is, is equal for everybody. So that, that's my personal kind of view. It could change. If the town comes and say, Ryan, we said yes, everybody in here only wants ten. I'm only gonna give ten. That's what the ordinance has been written, so, but, and we are gonna really write it to what the town says. Because you are gonna vote it. You, you have to vote the ordinance still, you have to pass the ordinance. Cause if we have to write it, and you say, this is what we told you, go back and do it again, then we'll have to go back and do it again. So, so that's to that point, but, you know, we are gonna have to craft the ordinance to what the town specifically wants, yes, point.
You know, the more I hear, and this information is great, um, the more it is starting to sound like this is gonna be just a few people that have some money. I mean, it sounds like it is gonna leave some of the, you know.
You have to invest, but like any farm, you have to invest.
They have smaller tiers, they have small.
That's why they have the boutique level, so you can only afford that small, and you can still.
You can build your business on.
And it also seems as though the license prices are fair for the size.
So, and, and that, to his point, that is true. I mean, a business could potentially grow still. It could be at that lower level, and in two years, say, I'm ready to expand, but you have to relicense and go for the next level and so forth. So it is an annual license.
I'm thinking more like a retail, you know, things that have to have specific, you know.
It makes, people have made a lot of money in Colorado, and, and they've cornered the business. But that's on the retail side of it more than most, and the impression I'm getting is retail's still not really a big want. Uh, it's just my personal feeling on the temperature in the room. But, uh, it's cause we're talking more from the agricultural side of the questions of where it is, so, and that's a different, but I could be wrong, so.
How is this whole thing, um, with the federal government, you know, this is not illegal?
Yeah.
So how does that?
Don't get overlooked by a federal officer, cause they.
DEA just announced the other day that they're not going to be pursuing any more marijuana for personal use. Now, if you've got a hundred kilos, that's, you're in the drug. Interstate transfer. Yeah.
Well, there's that.
If they have more farm, it's not gonna have any. My employ, my wife is a federal employee, she would get fired.
Yeah.
So.
But it seems as though all of these.
But that could change in five years, as it's more acceptable. Yeah, and I would assume it's coming, yes, sir. So I probably have a minority view in this room, so I'll get that on the tip right away. But, but what's intriguing me is, like, the last thing you've said there is your sense, and it's my sense too, that people aren't really interested in retail.
and it's my sense too, that people aren't really interested in retail. And I have to ask the question, "Why not?", right? And it, because, you know, everything I've heard about this is money, and I get it. Right? No doubt, I get it. But it begs the question of whether it's right.
Yep.
And, and, um, and if retail establishments are not right, that leaves a kernel of truth in my mind that something's not right.
Yeah.
And so if it's, if the, uh, and, and while I also appreciate sort of the libertarian point of view, um, and no offense by this, sir, but it, it's often a convenient one, in that, you know, if it feels good, then, right? So, but, and so in this case, I'll be honest, I'm, I'm already knowing all of it. Because I think, for me, um, I need to be able to go home and tell my daughters that drugs are destructive to society, and, and because we can make a lot of money on it, doesn't mean we should.
I agree. One man inside.
I understand, and, and the majority. The other thing I teach my daughters is, because a majority says it, doesn't mean it's right.
Yep.
Well.
And, and so, no offense to anyone, I mean, I just felt that I needed to express a.
So that's why the gray area really is, because the state is saying, "If you're over twenty-one, we're treating it like alcohol."
Right.
Yeah. We're treating it as a controlled substance, that's alcohol. The federal government hasn't said that yet.
Sure.
And maybe they won't, so, to your point.
Yeah.
So, when you say that, then, okay, well, now it's become a cash business, and, you know, from my perspective, when you talk about cash businesses that can't take the money on a regular, at this time, and deposit it, you're creating risk, and you're also putting risk on the neighbors. You're putting risk on the business. You're putting risk on the employees that are transporting that money. But that is something that is gonna be inherent anyways. If you work at a regular business, you know, Dice Arts gets broken into, you know, people still, it's still a target because of that, I mean. But at the same time, and I think the state has realized that, is the regulations, when it comes to security, and those security requirements, Dice Arts doesn't have a fence all the way around it. Doesn't have, well, it has cameras, but not to the extent that they have required it. So that, that's where the gray area is, is, and I completely agree. I've got three young kids, you know, I don't want them doing drugs, that's for sure. You, and I don't want them thinking this is right either. But, I know, the state is saying it's twenty-one, so, you know, are we gonna do it because we're part of the state, and is this the chance? Or not the chance, is this what, you know, the town wants?
I appreciate that, yeah, and, and that, as part of the town, that's why I felt the need to express what I want.
Yeah.
And, and, 'cause, and I, and I think the wisdom of what, what, if there's some wisdom in it, what the state did here was allow people.
Yep.
To opt out.
Okay.
You know, and to make it an opt-in situation.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
So it envisions, uh, within that majority said yes, that there may be places that say, "You know, we don't."
Yep.
And, and that's what I hope our town is, at the end of the day.
To that point.
Thank you.
When the.
All set.
Recreational marijuana bill was passed in two thousand sixteen. Um, it was, it passed by less than one percent statewide.
Yeah.
And most of rural Maine, it would, it passed because it was overwhelming, two to one support in southern Maine. And so I think you're gonna find, I mean, it's hard to say, if we have a referendum with four options, it's hard to say what the town will say.
Well, that break it out. I think the four options would break it out. So I'm probably the only one in the room that doesn't understand this, so I'm just gonna ask more, so I remember this one. Right now, what we're talking about is the personal use, grow, and sell thing, but the individual plant thing and the marijuana thing are two totally different things that people can already do. Personal use.
Personal use.
Somebody can already do that without this.
Yeah, we cannot regulate that.
Each of us can own three plants. Now, we can't sell it, it's for our own personal use. What we're talking about is the actual business side of it.
Sure, the licensing, and the bigger grow, and then the selling to other people.
Yeah.
Okay, and then the medical marijuana one is different, because you can have a license to do that without this.
Yeah.
And then you can grow and sell to the medical dispensaries.
Yeah.
Okay.
And hemp is an agricultural crop. There's a whole basket of things, so, so, yeah. There's a lot, yeah, a lot of silos there, so, yeah. And, yeah, and I, from the planning point standpoint, our point of view is, we've had interest, and we feel that it is the planning board's responsibility to provide that opportunity to those people to do what they wanna do. And by doing that is by putting the question out there to the town to opt in, yes or no. So that they have that fair opportunity to say, "Yes, we can do this", or "This is allowed or not." A lot of towns can just not vote at all, because until you vote, you're not opted in. So the planning board, what we've always said is, we're not gonna tell you we're for or against it, as a board. We are neutral, because this is, we feel, is a very much a political issue, and also a personal issue, in that we should let the town tell us what they wanna do on this topic, 'cause it is such a, you know, hot topic personally. Yes, sir.
Can I understand that earlier you said that we already have rural operation in town, it's either?
It's a medical marijuana facility, oh, it's, sorry, it's, yeah, medical. It's operated, it has a state license and everything. It's regulated by the state.
Medical marijuana is a whole different separate, it's a whole separate, um, set of regulations.
They have different regulations, different.
It's a manufacturing facility, correct?
Correct, I believe so.
So it's number three on the list.
No.
No, 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 it's a growing, sorry, it's a, it's a cultivation facility.
Right, but it's medical. It's not part of the adult recreational, two different, just like the head, there's different ones.
If, they can't take it into Bangor and sell it to the head shops.
They, they can only sell it to people that have a card.
Card, you have to have a medical card.
And there are assigned certain people, and they can only have so many people that they sell to. It's not unrestricted.
It's clearly regulated as well.
Yeah.
But that, basically, the state, the state has said, "You're not touching it, that still lies."
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that, and that is in a rural residential, or what?
It's within the town managers. Um, it's, yes, it's close by.
I just wanna throw out to the people that, that have an interest in voting against it, which is certainly their right, but if it passes, I just wanna remind them and ask them, "Don't give up. Be responsive, come in and be part of the ordinances. If there's certain areas you feel strongly about, like in your residential area or rural area, and you don't think it should be sold or grown or extracted or any of those things, you'll have the opportunity to work with the planning board to see that that piece of it happens as well." So, some people may be okay with it, having one retail store maybe down by Dice Arts or something like that, but we don't want it anywhere else. And you'll have that opportunity to work with the town to do that.
And while cultivation is an agricultural.
Process.
Activity process, thank you. It does not fall under agriculture. So you could still limit it by zone. Does that make sense?
Going off of what you said, if, if it is like a miseducation or a preconceived stereotypical notion about what they think it may be like, you know, time will tell that things may not be as they seem, and that.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, you can obviously amend ordinances, you can add, drop, stuff like that. I also wanna make a point, one of the things we learned in the cell phone power ordinance. They bring up another sticky point, but, uh, so we had a limited, originally a limited, limited that to certain zones. And where you were talking about, you know, we wanted to put it next to Dice Arts. It's a high-traffic area, high visibility area, a lot of people live in the area. And what we were told from the town was like, "We would rather you stuck it in a rural area, where there's only a couple of people." We were thinking, protect the rural area. And it was actually reversed, is, we'd rather have it where it's not near as many people. So it was like, okay, well, stuff like that is what we'll have to go through. Lessons learned, try to apply them to future things, so.
And also, you.
Our lessons learned, so.
And it comes with barbed wire too, 'cause it says, it seems like a pretty safe place.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would encourage you to drive up sixty-nine and see what, that's, if we allow, is probably the type of facility that you most likely would see.
Didn't see that property before, I just didn't know what it was.
That's what it is.
Oh, yeah, it depends on the barbed wire.
Yeah.
If it's, if it's in a building, does it have to have a fence too?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you gotta have eight foot.
I didn't know they had a fence.
Yeah, it says in here that if, for recreational purposes, you need six foot of barbed wire or eight foot without.
Yeah.
So who's gonna start up a fencing company?
Yeah, part of that, yeah, the horse sale, part of the horse sale. I, again, I wanted, if you, if you feel that I'm encouraging this, I apologize, I'm trying to be informational. And I don't want you to say that the planning board is for this or against this. I, that, we have mixed opinions on the planning board, I'll be honest, and some strong opinions as well. So, and that's where we said we need to, and same with the selectmen, we need to play it to the town, and that's where we're coming from. We're trying to be informational, we're gonna put the information out there, generate discussions, um, so, so I apologize, you know, sometimes I may play, I, I, I'm not for playing devil's advocate, and even though that's not what I actually truly believe, um, so, everybody needs to make their decision. I just want everybody to be able to have the opportunity to make that decision, is where I come from on this option, so, I think.
Don't forget to come vote.
Yeah.
Are we doing the vote as a town meeting vote, or is it gonna be on the ballot November?
I believe we're gonna put it on the actual ballot, because we feel, initially, we thought we'd just do a town meeting, but because of time-wise, it actually fell up, fell very well in line with the ballot, and because, to the very present point, the town actually has a good turnout rate, that otherwise we'll have five people show up and make the decision.
Right.
Or, or in this case, probably thirty to forty people. But with a ballot, we're more likely to get a hundred fifty to two hundred.
Yes.
Yeah, and, yeah, hey, well, I really, why didn't you work out such a high turnout? So, but, uh, so.
And you know what, I think we, um, just going forward, I think we revise the question.
We will.
And put it on the website.
Yeah, but we have to post, it has to be certified forty-five days in.
Yes, exactly. So we wanna email.
I don't think it'll be that hard, really, to break that out. I think you're, you know, what I read is basically that second half of the ordinance part is gonna be, you know, cotton-paste every single one of these four.
Right, okay.
Type of things. And then that will narrow it down, right off that, you know, or could eliminate it altogether.
Right.
So, it'll also give us a real, like to you, I forgot, it's, you know, it will, it will tell us pretty quickly what the town feels about certain things.
Marie, did that, did that sample ballot say, "Do you wish to opt out completely"?
You can't opt in with.
You can opt out, it's opt-in.
Or out.
'Cause you already opted out.
Or opt out, opt out.
But how the law is rating, you're already opted out.
So it's just yes and no for all the other things.
The only way we could come in is if the town votes.
Well, for instance, it says, "Shall the town vote authorize, within the municipality, the operation of adult-use marijuana, um, stores? Or you could say, adult-use marijuana cultivation facilities? Or you could say, adult-use marijuana chronic change practice facilities? Or testing facilities? Call them, provided they operate and comply with all applicable state and local ordinance."
Okay.
And like Ryan said, we already have a.
Built-in law.
A built-in, uh, statement about ordinance needing to be complete, that we would.
What you're reading, though, is yes or no, one being all four.
No, you would have four separate questions.
Each one would have yes and no after?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I probably make sure that it's a national, uh, town. Let the county out, town prior goes out letting, you know, that's very important.
Four questions.
Once, and.
Yeah, and how they're gonna be worded, so they can think about it?
And then if he's.
It's a good idea.
How, so.
We have put the four.
They vote yes or no, and we're not opting out, 'cause the way we opt out of enough people voting no, is just to.
We don't do any of that.
Well, if you say. So if that's said, and, um, so that people understand that, I think that's.
Yeah, I mean, it's strictly to opt in.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Do you want to opt in, to say, "No, you're opting out"?
Yeah.
But, but you have to say no to opting in.
Right.
You're saying no to opting in, yeah.
Right.
In case, then we don't need to do anything.
You should say yes.
This is not a right choice. Also, just to remember where we are, our meetings are once a month, they're open to the public, at least.
Normally, it's the second Wednesday of the month, September, we're meeting, the third Wednesday. But that would be other business applications and so forth, but, um, so. Seven, sorry, seven, nine, we are, we started.
Um, if we have a special meeting to work on the ordinance at such time, ensure there will be public numbers.
Yeah, we have to, we have an application, that's where we moved it. And we've been busy, I mean.
Yeah.
The, the town is, is, is growing, there's a lot of interest in the town growing. I mean, how many have we done in this year already? I mean, half a dozen of these, probably one of that.
Wasn't that?
So, I mean, we didn't do three a year for a long time, two or three Y C. But now, it, we can't get, you know, we're working on shoreline, 'cause that has to be updated, and basically, I'm, I'm paying Marie to do it on the side for us to be able to short look at it and work through it to present to the town. So we can't do it during, during our normal business hours, because we've been having so many applications coming in. So, and, and that's how we, it, it, it's good, I mean, it's a good thing, but, you know. So we are busy, and this will be part of it, and I expect it to, you know, depending on the results, really, to take up a bunch of time or no time, so. But, and we'll be having more discussions, regular meetings and so forth, so I think if we don't have anything on the agenda, we'll be putting it out there.